The Wheat Ridge City Council Meeting of June 24, 2013. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please take role?
Joyce J.
Here.
Mike Stites.
Here.
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Bud Starker.
Present.
Joe Demott.
Present.
Kristi Davis.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of June 10, 2013?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve was seconded by Mr. Starker. Any changes to the minutes? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero with Mr. Pond abstaining.
Thank you. We have one proclamation this evening and a couple of announcements about Discovery Park and fireworks. I'll come down to the podium and read these announcements. So I'd like to ask Jimmy Luthy to please come forward. We have a proclamation, Break for Bella Summer Safe Driving Awareness Campaign. And so whereas pedestrian fatalities involving children under the age of 14 are the greatest during summer months, with more than 80% of accidents occurring at non-intersection locations, and whereas motor vehicle crashes are the leading cause of death for children two to 14 years of age, and whereas each day more than nine people are killed and more than 1,000 people are injured in accidents that involve a distracted driver, and whereas safe and attentive drivers who are not distracted adhere to posted neighborhood speed limit makes our streets inherently safer for pedestrians, bicyclists, and other drivers, now therefore be resolved that the mayor and the city council of Wheat Ridge do hereby recognize the Break for Bella Summer Safe Neighborhood Driving Awareness Campaign in the city of Wheat Ridge beginning June 1, 2013 through August 31, 2013, and encourage all citizens to practice safe driving techniques and be mindful and aware of pedestrians this summer.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much Mayor DiTulio and to the Wheat Ridge City Council for issuing this proclamation and being here tonight in support of Break for Bella. My name is Jimmy Luthy, as Mayor DiTulio just said, and I am with Communication Infrastructure Group, a public relations firm in Denver. In 2009, Kristi Estes, a colleague of mine at CIG, was playing, or a daughter of Kristi Estes, was playing in the street in front of her home when she was struck by a speeding car. Her name is Bella. She was five years old at the time, and now she was badly injured in this accident. Fortunately, after many long months of recovery, she made a full recovery and is with us today at the age of nine and happy and healthy. But unfortunately, many other kids, and kids like Bella and families like the Estes family are not so lucky. And as a result of this incident and so many others like it, CIG was inspired in 2011 to start the Break for Bella campaign, and our goal is simply to do everything we can to encourage safe neighborhood driving and pedestrian behavior, especially throughout the summer months when kids are out and about and playing in all the neighborhoods. So as citizens, we all know we can drive safer, we can drive slower throughout the neighborhoods, we can put away our cell phones and make a pledge to drive distraction-free. And as parents, you can teach your kids to, you can teach them safe pedestrian habits in the streets that they will take with them for the rest of their lives. So tonight and throughout the remainder of the summer, we invite the public and encourage the public to show its support for the Break for Bella campaign by simply liking our Facebook page at facebook.com/BrakeForBella. That's all I have for you tonight, so I thank you for your time and have a wonderful evening.
As council may be aware and the city staff may be aware, we've had a lot of calls and comments about Discovery Park looking so bad with the grass and the trees, and I wanted to make an announcement before the council meeting started under proclamation so that everybody will hear. We usually have more people here at the beginning of the meeting. I just wanted to read some information that I acquired today about Discovery Park as the complaints have been coming in about the grass and the trees being dead from the lack of water. On the background of this, certain items in the park are under warranty from the construction contractor. These items include the irrigation pumping and system and tree replacement. The park sodden trees are now being watered twice a week in compliance with the drought restrictions by Consolidated Mutual Water. The one difference is, is the splash park was considered a pool, so the students are, children are used, are able to use the splash park. There's a button out there and they can push that button and the water will spray, but the watering restrictions apply towards the lawn and the trees. New trees were planted at Discovery by the contractor to replace trees that were lost last year. Staff has been hand-watering all of the trees in the park while the irrigation pump was being repaired. The grass will be fertilized and treated for weed control in the fall per the regular schedule, and the grass is expected to recover and is now on a regular watering schedule. So if you have any questions, please feel free to call the Parks Department, but staff is working on the park and the trees have been replaced with what they could, and we should have it looking hopefully better by the fall. And like I mentioned, I'll do the fireworks later when, at the end of the meeting, so. Okay, we're moving on to citizens' right to speak. Citizens who wish to speak may speak on any matter that's not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes. Please step forward to the podium and spell your last name for the record and give us
Thank you, Mayor DiTulio, and good evening, Wheat Ridge City Council. It's so nice to see you this evening. My name is State Representative Sue Schaefer. I know all of you. I reside at 35 Hillside Drive. I can be very brief. I'm here for several comments that I think are very important. I'm very honored that our mayor, Jerry DiTulio, won a very prestigious award, and I don't know if everybody realizes that, that he was honored as the first People's Award by the Colorado Special Education Advisory Committee. And I am very attached to the special ed children because these are our most vulnerable and I think often valuable children. And Mayor DiTulio has done so much at Wheat Ridge High School. The letter from the superintendent of schools speaks about his passion, his dedication, his humanity, and how he works for every child in the Jefferson County Schools, the Wheat Ridge Schools, to have a high-quality education. Now, these special ed students, and I'm very passionate about this because I am a career educator, grow up to become intellectually and developmentally disabled adults, and you may or may not be aware that our state is not doing as much as we need to do, in my opinion, to decrease the developmentally disabled waitlist. So in the state capital this year, I will be working very hard to try to find more state services for the special ed children who then later become developmentally disabled adults. I want to thank you so much for all you've done for our city. As I drive around and I look at your website, I'm just so pleased with the new businesses that have come into Wheat Ridge, the Wheat Ridge 2020, the Housing Authority, the Wheat Ridge Business Association. It seems that we have a real collaborative effort, the new addition on Joe's Business, Pietrus, things like that. And I feel like we and Wheat Ridge are somewhere between, you know, Denver and Golden, but we're Wheat Ridge and we're the little engine that could and will and has. So I want you to know the citizens are very happy with what we are doing in coordination with the state, and it's always an honor to speak to you. One other request from the citizens of District 3. George, you and I have spoken about whatever we can do in our planning to repave Paramount Heights. This is an area that is attracting a lot of new families with children, and I just want to make sure that our streets in Paramount Heights, a historic district, are repaved as much as possible. And I know you have a long list of budget requests, but that's just something, people have called me and said, "Well, Sue, can't you do something about this?" I said, "Well, call George and call the mayor, call the Patrick," and I don't know if they have, but I'm here just to make that request to get that in the queue. The last thing I'll say, and I'm probably about out of time, news from the state. We had some fairly good news, as you probably know. Larry, you probably know more about this than I do, but our economic forecast shows that we are in a continuing recovery. Our employment rate is 93.1%, which is better than most states, and we have better wages, better consumer spending, and better home construction. This all means that we're going to have a slightly better fiscal outlook and maybe a little bit more help from the state for the cities, okay? So thank you very much for all you're doing. I really appreciate seeing you all and being able to continue to work with you. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else for public comment, comment on any item not on the agenda? Seeing none, are there any changes to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we move on to public hearings and ordinances on second reading. I'm going to open the public hearing for Resolution 19-2013. Mr. Reinhardt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Resolution Number 19-2013, a resolution authorizing the execution of agreement with Seniors Resource Center to participate in Wheat Ridge Business Development Zone Program for a rebate of 100% of the eligible city's fees, charges, and taxes associated with the site improvements to 3227 Chase. The Senior Resource Center is in the process, in the, in the process of starting Phase Two, their facility expansion on 327, 3227 Chase Street. The construction renovation process will include the installation of new flooring, carpet, replacement of plumbing, and needed reconfiguring of homes to better serve their staffing and client needs, and a replacement of the aging HVAC system. They've applied for refund of the fees and use taxes for the project under the BDZ program. And we're being asked on reading tonight to move that program forward. Is a motion in order?
Well, do you have any staff presentation? This is, this is a public hearing, so staff, do you want to make any presentation?
Mr. Reinhardt covered most of it, but I'd just like to say staff has looked at this proposal and a request from Senior Resource Center, and this is a significant positive investment in our community, both economically and in their ability to provide more services to our seniors. This request does meet all of the criterion of the BDZ program except one, which is, does not directly generate new sales and use tax. However, there will be potential spillover from, from those visiting the center. So the BDZ program does allow city council to still provide a rebate even if it doesn't meet all the criteria, but it does require a three-quarters majority vote of council to approve, approve the rebate. As Mr. Reinhardt said, they are asking for approximately $22,070 fee and tax rebate.
Do we have anybody here from the public to speak on item number one? Seeing none, we move on to council questions or discussion. Close the public hearing and a motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 19-2013, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with the Senior Resource Center to participate in the Wheat Ridge Business Development Zone Program for rebate of 100% of the eligible fees, charges, and taxes in association with improvements to 3227 Chase Street in Wheat Ridge.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve was seconded by Ms. Langworthy. Discussion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight-zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is ordinances on first reading. Item two is Council Bill Number 09-2013. Mr. Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 09-2013, an ordinance reappointing presiding municipal judge Christopher Randall, increasing his hourly compensation, and approving a presiding municipal judge services agreement. Is a motion in order?
A motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 09-2013, an ordinance reappointing presiding municipal judge Christopher Randall, increasing his hourly compensation, and approving a presiding municipal judge services agreement. On first reading, order it published, public hearing set for Monday, July 8, 2013, at 7:00 PM in city council chambers, and then at take effect upon adoption at read, second reading, as permitted by the charter.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number two, was seconded by Mr. Reinhardt and Mr. Stites. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight-zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item three, Mr. Pond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to grant two utility easements to the Public Service Company of Colorado to facilitate undergrounding electric lines along Kipling Street from 32nd to 35th Avenue. In conjunction with the Kipling Street Trail Construction Project from 32nd to 44th Avenue, the city requested that Public Service Company of Colorado, doing business as Excel Energy, bury the overhead electric lines from 32nd Avenue to 35th Avenue. To facilitate the undergrounding, a city must provide Public Service Company of Colorado two utility easements outside of this street right away. Is motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to grant two utility easements to the Public Service Company of Colorado to facilitate undergrounding of electric lines along Kipling Street from 32nd to 35th Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number three, was seconded by Mr. Stites. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to one with Mr. Demott voting no.
Item four, Mr. Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce motion to approve award of ITB 1305 bus bench purchase and installation project to KECI Colorado Incorporated Sedalia, Colorado, in the contract amount of $151,170, and to approve a contingency amount of $15,117. The city was awarded Colorado Department of Transportation Funding Advancement for Surface Transportation and Economic Recovery Faster Grant in September 2011 to install 38 bus benches at selected locations throughout the city. The project includes purchase and installation of bus benches and trash receptacles. CDOT will administer the projects, state funding, while the city will manage the purchase and installation of the bus benches. The apparent lowest responsible and responsive bidder is KEC Colorado Incorporated Sedalia, Colorado, in the amount of $151,170. The company's references and experience were evaluated by public works staff as a basis for recommendation. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve award ITB 1305 bus bench purchase and installation project to KECI Colorado Incorporated Sedalia, Colorado, in the amount of $151,170 with a contingency amount of $15,117, and that the director of public works be authorized to issue change orders up to a total contract and contingency amount of $166,287.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Mr. Pond. Please poll the council on item five. I'm sorry, item four, item four.
Who was the second?
Mr. Pond.
George. Motion carries eight-zero.
Thank you. Item five, consideration of the mayor's veto. Mr. Reinhardt?
Yes, I'd like to introduce a discussion on the consideration of the mayor's veto of Council Bill 08-2013, an ordinance amending penalties for violating Sections 1203 and 1208 of the Model Traffic Code as adopted by the city concerning parking of major vehicles and parking privileges for persons with disabilities respectively, and making conforming amendments to 13-2 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Law. On June 10, council adopt this ordinance on second reading after amending it to reduce the fine from, to $150 for violations of Section 1208 of the parking for persons with disabilities before councils, consideration of the override, before councils, the consideration of the override of the major, of the mayor's veto. Is a motion in order?
A motion's in order. We have some public here to speak. Motion's in order.
I move to override the mayor's veto of Council Bill 08-2013, an ordinance amending the penalties for violations of 1203 and 1208 of the Model Traffic Code for Colorado as adopted by the city concerning the parking of major vehicles and parking privileges for persons with disabilities respectively, and making conforming amendments to Section 13-2 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws. As said, ordinance was adopted with amendments on June 10, 2013.
Is there a second?
All second.
We have a motion for approval for, to override. It was seconded by Mr. Starker. Please step forward to the podium for public comment on item number five, and then we'll Please spell your last name for the record and state your city or your address.
Hi, my name is Kristi L. Mangold, and I am blind, and I have been physically disabled for... for...
Well, Kristi, would you mind spelling your last name for the record, please?
My apologies. It is my talking watch. The last name is M-A-N-G-O-L-D.
Thank you.
And I am a new resident, and I am, it is my great pleasure to be here for the first time. I was an independent living advocate, a medical advocate for the state of Nebraska. And I moved here, and I am in the process of getting my certificate to do the same for the state of Colorado for all disabled individuals. And I was very involved with a increase in the fines, handicap misuse. We hire our own task force of handicapped individuals. We put it on TV, and we substantially reduced the abuse. And we also used that money for the extra fees. Our fees went from $250 to $500, especially if they were repeated offenses. And that greatly benefited many worthy advocates, education, disabled, just all kinds of things. So, the rate, we did a study on it, and it fell like significantly. So, I ask that we go with the mayor and please vote in favor of increasing this because normally, I'm in a three-wheel scooter, but I literally flew here by the seat of my pants tonight, so please forgive my dress, but I wanted desperately to speak out on this because this is a worthy, very worthy cause, and it is misused by grandchildren, personal care, anybody that's got a placard or handicap license plate, well, we'll just park here for a second, and on we go. Well, it makes it a little difficult for those of us that really need it. So, I ask you to please vote in favor of raising it because it will be, it'll be a great deterrent in the long run. And I thank you for your time, and I'm a very proud new resident. I'm staying here until it's my time. So, I'm here to stay, people.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Please spell your last name for the record.
Sure, my name is Gina Robinson. It's R-O-B-I-N-S-O-N. I am not a Wheat Ridge resident. I'm here on behalf of the Colorado Advisory Council for Persons with Disabilities. I was here when you voted prior to raise the fines, and you did a lot of work that night to raise the fines. You had to call a special session, and you recessed, and you really talked among yourselves about raising the fines, and at that point in time, you voted to do it. So, I'd like to remind you of some of the things we talked about that night. Right now that we know that there are 11 valid blue disabled parking placards issued in the state of Colorado for every person who should have one, that means that we have rampant abuse. There's 183,000 people in Colorado with a mobility disappearance and 1.2 million blue tags. We need to do something to get them off the street. We need to do something to get them out of people's cars, and we need to do something to stop them from ordering them on the Internet at $10 a pop. $10 versus $350, I'm not going to order it if I know that I'm going to get a $350 fine. We also did a study as a part of the council back in January of 2013. We found that the average wait time for a disabled space is 17 minutes. One person indicated they had a 90-minute wait to see a doctor, and that is at a facility in Wheat Ridge. And 25% of the respondents said that they actually went home. They went home without their groceries. They went home without seeing their doctor. They went home without being able to do whatever they were out in the community to do, whether that be eat, vote, or whatever. Please do not lower the fines. There's a reason why they're that high. You heard from Kristi that it works. We're looking for the deterrent. And what is your message going to be when you pass it, and now you want to take it away? I understand that you're saying, well, it's not as high as some other things, but then you're turning around and telling the folks in the disability community that they're not as important as those other people that you're talking about. Tell them that they're important. Tell them that their time and effort is important. Tell them that their time spent in the community and their money spent in the community is important. I want to finish with one last thing. I stopped at Red Lobster on the way down Wadsworth today. Five spaces, all full. I found one tag that was ordered off the Internet. It's false. So, right there, you're looking at a tag that we could take off the street and open that spot. If you write two tickets per day amongst all your police force, you'll get an additional $30,000 per year just in fines for the city. That means a lot in getting those tags off the street, getting those people to stop it, and doing some education around what this means for the people. Thanks for your time.
Good evening, everyone. Nancy Snow, no, I don't live here, but I'm back.
Could you just spell your last name for the record, please?
My address?
Spell your last name for the record.
Oh, S-N-O-W. Okay. I want to ask you as strong as I can to vote no on the override, and I'd like to convey something to you from somebody else from the same commission that she belongs to, who asked me to tell you that this is not a traffic issue, that this is a civil rights issue. He put it in pretty simple language, that if he goes someplace and there's no place to park, somebody else who was not entitled to that place, he cannot go to dinner or a meeting and a lot of other places. And some of you probably have or will need a handicap sticker yourself sometime, and believe it or not, it's important. Anyway, many, many years ago, long before this law they're talking about, I don't know if you're aware, that handicapped people were sort of trapped. They were either institutionalized, or they were home, and they couldn't go anywhere. Because if they got out, there were no handicap bathrooms. The streets weren't accessible, the curb cuts weren't accessible. So, a lot of federal laws got passed. I've given you the whole history. I know you know the ADA at least. But the state is the one that should and the city be enforcing one part of that, which is handicap parking. And I was very proud of you all because you did pass the state law as an ordinance. I thought I was really great that night. You didn't pass, unfortunately, the, what is it, the part where you share money with the state for education, but you did pass it. Now, frankly, I'm not very proud of you. I'm somewhere between sort of startled and horrified by what happened. I understand, and I read the long memo from Commander Casa, that the police department had a problem with what to do on second and third offenses, which is kind of interesting since you almost don't give any tickets. But anyway, in the discussion, all of a sudden, I remember, I think it was Bud, came up and asked for a consensus to lower the fine, which wasn't even an issue, I don't think. I was at home, and I thought, whoa, whoa, how did that happen? And frankly, I had found some of the comments about that from staff and from council people sort of offensive. Whether they meant it or not, it certainly gave the impression, especially if you really lower the fine, that handicap parking and the people who need it really don't matter and that enforcement's a bother. I'm very aware that the police have plenty to do in this city. We have burglaries. We have other crimes. We have traffic problems. We even have a missing person. But it's a very, very important issue to the person who needs the handicap parking. So, I want to ask you, please, please, do not lower the fine. I know it sounds terrible. I hope I do not get one, but I think if you give a few fines and enforce that $350, you won't get a lot more. So, please do not lower, please do not lower the fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Please spell your last name for the record.
It's Abbott, A-B-B-O-T-T, and I'm here, I want to say good evening to everybody. It's nice to see everybody, the council and the mayor. And I want to speak basically from the position I think we should uphold the mayor's veto. And the reason is, I think that the handicap parking, although it can be a nuisance to some of us once in a while, is there for a good reason. You know, 30, 40 years ago, they started putting these handicap parking spaces in for a good reason, that people with legitimate handicaps need to have closer parking just to make their life a little bit easier and in some cases even functional. So, I think it's a serious violation of our moral code and our parking code to not find people who violate that covenant of a handicap parking. In my mind, there's scofflaws, to use the vernacular, we could call them smart asses. That's the reality. We all drive into a parking lot and see a close spot and head over for it only to find out that it's handicapped, and then we have to drive out to the boonies and hike in the rest of the way. We all do that, even though it's a big nuisance. We follow the rules. People who would be subjected to this new fine schedule don't follow the rules. In fact, I would offer they consider the rest of us chumps for following this rule. So, I think we should stick with the higher fine schedule as a deterrent, and if it's, I've heard a couple of arguments that we'd be the highest in the metro area. Well, maybe Wheat Ridge should lead instead of follow on this and have the highest one in the metro area. It doesn't have to be 300, but it should be significantly high enough to get people's attention. But it's not a good idea to park in a handicap spot in Wheat Ridge. I think another one that I've heard is that it has the potential to overload the court system and the staff at the courts. Well, I just can't buy that. I don't think there's enough of these tickets written to really overload the court system or the staff. I was staff for the city for many, many years, and I had a little overload once in a while. It just went along with the job. They paid me. So, I want to ask that we allow the mayor's veto to stand and then maybe reconsider the dollar amount on the fine schedule or something like that. But I think it's, this is an important statement to make from a societal standpoint. Wheat Ridge takes handicap parking seriously. Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Thank you. Move on to discussion from council. Mr. Dell?
If you don't mind, I'd like to spend just a minute kind of giving the procedures that are kind of available here. I went over briefly at study session, pardon me, last week, but I think might be helpful just to remind everyone. What we, you have in front of you is a motion to override the mayor's veto under the Charter that in order to pass must pass by six votes. Councilmember Pond was not present when this ordinance was originally adopted, but this is legislative, and as I mentioned last time, not only may he vote, but he must vote on this, on this matter. If the override motion fails to get six votes, then the ordinance is overridden. You return to the fine schedule that's presently existing, $350, and a tiered system going up to $1,000 for handicap parking violations. If the veto override motion passes, then the ordinance that you adopted on June 10 at the $150 level is now effective, or excuse me, it's now been adopted. And your only opportunity to reconsider that and make any changes that would happen tonight would be to move to reconsider at that point in time, and that takes five votes to reconsider. It's a majority of the entire membership of the council. Once you reconsider, you can amend it, and you can, you can do other things, and you can do that tonight if you wish, if you go there. If the, that is the only route that would be available to council to make changes to the number tonight would be that second door. Certainly, if the veto is not overridden, any council member can certainly suggest that the process start over again, and we initiate a new ordinance, and that, you know, goes through a couple of readings if you want, if there's desire on the council to change the number. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I realize it's, there's a lot of little twists and turns, and it's kind of a decision tree that if you take one choice, it ends up not taking another. So, I'm happy to lead you through it as it goes forward. Thanks.
Ms. Jay?
If I understand correctly what you're saying, if we override the mayor's veto, then that we, in order to amend or change the previous ordinance, would require, that we would reconsider it tonight?
That's correct.
And that would be the most efficient way to do it if there is a different proposal that we would like to make?
Yes, if there's a desire to make a different proposal than, than either the $150 that, you know, is in the ordinance you passed or the $350 that is in the present code, and you want to do that tonight, the only way to do that is override and reconsider to do it tonight.
If this is appropriate time, my feeling about it is that while $300 seems like it's a little bit of a brass knuckle kind of approach to our citizens, the $150 seems too low. And I do appreciate what a handicap person must have to go through and have great sympathy in that direction. What I would propose, should we override the mayor's veto, that we come back with a change to make that amount, split the difference and make it 225, which would bring us up to a more satisfactory level that perhaps most directions, in which we could then get to it right away and have it enforced instead of going through what could be a stall as far as getting the ordinance done and sitting with the tier system.
Mr. Reinhardt?
Just a process question. If there was a resolution to reconsider, it would be from the prevailing parties from the last time, and that would be any member of the six that voted in favor of the ordinance? Or would it be any who may vote, the five that voted for the amendment?
It would be, it would be any of the six that voted for the final ordinance as amended, and there were, you were right, there were six. It was a six-to-one vote to adopt the ordinance on second reading.
Thank you.
So, I guess we need to start somewhere here to see where we're at. Oh, Ms. Davis?
Thank you. I have, instead of a process question, I have a question for the police, for the chief. So, it sounds like from some of the public comment, there's two issues at hand. One, just the folks that willy-nilly go park in a handicap, and I have stopped people before to say, did you realize that's a handicap parking spot? And some of them move, some of them give me a crusty. But the other thing is, is policing what sounds like there's some forged handicap little flags or those types of things are, is that something that the code enforcement are doing? Are they trained to know the difference between a legitimate tag versus an Internet $10 tag? I just wanted to get some feedback from you because it sounds like it's twofold, two of the issues. One, you know, just the person that, you know, feels like they own the place and parks in a parking spot they shouldn't, and then those that are trying to run a quick one on somebody. So, I just was curious as code enforcement or the police force, how they handle that? Do they look at both scenarios?
Well, it's a great question. Parking in general, in terms of a priority, is pretty low on the priority list. You know, we have other more serious issues, so when we do respond to parking violations, it's probably under one or two scenarios. One is we get a call from somebody. So, whether it's the parking of major vehicles or a handicap parking issue, somebody will call the police department, and if we have a car that is available, we'll send somebody by there or get one there as quickly as we can. And then the other potential scenario is if we've had a number of complaints about parking in a particular area, we'll direct resources when officers or our code enforcement folks have time available to work particular areas to enforce crime. With criminal activities we have with trespasses and commodity metal thefts and trespasses to cars and burglaries, we're really trying to focus the available resources we have and the officer's time, whether it's community service officers, patrol officers, to those more serious crimes. So, our response to parking right now is reactionary. It's based either on a call for service or a specific problem area. In regards to your question on forged handicap placards, yeah, we do training on that. Our officers and our CSOs, you know, are aware of what to look for. I would have to check our statistics to see if we've had a call for services. for. I would have to check our statistics to see if we've had a call for services related to a forged handicap parking tag. There's certainly not one that comes to mind. Doesn't mean that it doesn't exist in the 30, you know, 2,000 calls for service that we have on an annual basis. I'm, I'm sure there's probably, you know, one or two claims there in regards to that. But we also see, I mean, you know, people forge their license plate stickers. You know, they forge a variety of different things. And, and we provide training, you know, to, to our officers on, on all those particulars, if that helps.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Pond?
Go ahead.
I go. Well-
So polite.
Before all this, it was three-tiered. And I think it started, what, 350, went to 500 and then $1,000 on the third offense. So they were having problems with that. So then we changed it. And I still am very much in favor of the $300 mark. And I'll say it a third time. I think it's pretty schmucky when somebody parks in a handicap spot and I think they should know it. I really do. But 150, to me, means nothing. And I think 225 means nothing. I think it's a slap in the face to what we're trying to do here. But I think that 300 is good. I think that it serves a purpose and, and sets a point that we're, it's unacceptable to do that. I don't care where you're, if you're in Denver, Arvada-Lakewood, or whatever, but in Wheat Ridge, it's going to be unacceptable to do that. So I'm still in favor of the $300 fine. And so do what you want.
Mr. Pond?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I just, I want to take a little bit of time to kind of go through this. I was not in attendance on, on June 10th, but I want to, first of all, be clear that I, I, I was in, in attendance at the studies, the study session or the first, the, the first reading where it was, where it came up. And, and I did watch the video carefully, really a couple of times to, to look at the conversation on, on the dais as well as the, the staff report. And subsequently, I, you know, I've had several conversations with constituents and interested parties on this. This is obviously, you know, an issue that people are passionate about for good reason. And I just want to make a couple of things clear as, and just kind of lay out how I'm looking at this since I'm coming into it after missing that meeting. One thing that I think is clear, just to stay, say right up front, regardless of the, of the discussion of, of, of the fine structure or the fine itself, I did not for one second get the impression in, in looking at that or talking to anyone, that anyone on this council was, was disregarding the, the interests of the disabled, you know, community in our state or in our, in our city. I still don't feel that way. I will say that when I, when I watched it, I, I felt and still do feel that, that I would have voted to, I would not have voted for the amendment to go from 300 to 150. I would have voted for 300. That's how I felt at earlier conversations and I, and I, it's how I, how I felt in, in watching the conversation and, and the, and the report. So, you know, however, the way I see it now is that, that, that still would have made it a five-three vote for that amendment. That amendment still would have passed and we would still, still be sitting, sitting here. And it's, and it's apparent that the will of the council, the majority of the council is, is not for the larger, larger fine. Because of that, you know, and, and under, I think, you know, hard consideration on this, I'm, I, I want to uphold the intent of the mayor's veto. And I, again, carefully watched this, the recording. And, and, and what I saw on that is, is the request for a conversation of compromise and, and a request to, to, if it wasn't going to be 300, that it might be something, you know, that was higher than 150. And so, what I understand about the procedural discussion that occurred, that just occurred, that in order to have that conversation and what Joyce just said in terms of, of her willingness to, to have that conversation, and, and I hope, or I would ask if others are willing to have that conversation, that I would, I would vote to, to overturn the veto for the intent of having the conversation and, and to actually uphold the intent of the veto, which was to create a compromised number. You know, again, and I don't think that compromise in my mind is, is compromising, you know, the, the value of any of these, of these parties or diminishing, you know, the intent of it. It still puts it at a significant fine. And it, and I, and I, and I think it seems to cut a, a compromise that, that hopefully can work for, for all parties. I know that some people may not be happy exactly with that, but that's kind of how I see it right now. I wanted to be very clear about that.
And Mr. Dahl, like you had mentioned earlier, if the veto is not overridden, then council can make a direction to bring back a, a new ordinance with a new number and go through first and second reading in more of a public process. If it is overridden, they can reconsider tonight.
That's correct. Yep.
So you got a couple of choices. If you, if you actually, if you brought it back under first and second reading again and didn't override the veto, you'd have that first and second reading again. Or you can have the conversation tonight on reconsideration. Mr. Strabach?
I mean, my, I think we've already heard that, you know, that there's a considerable amount of staff time. It seems like we're, we're in a position right now to, to carry out this discussion. And, and I think it's the most efficient, you know, way to do it as opposed to kind of putting it, putting it through those, those paces. Again, that's, again, that's not the only way to do it, but that's my, that's my sense right now.
All right. So we need to make a decision on this first. So there's a motion to override. It was seconded by Mr. Starker. Take six votes to pass. Then we'll, we'll move, we'll move on from there depending on what happens. Please poll the council.
Excuse me. Motion carries seven to one with Mr. Stites voting no.
So now we need a motion to reconsider if that's so desired. And you would say I moved to reconsider council bill number 08-2013 if someone wants to make that motion? Mr. Demont? Mr. Demont?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to reconsider and approve council bill number 08-2013 and ordinance amending the penalties for violating sections 1203 and 1208 of the model traffic code for Colorado as adopted by the city concerning the parking of major vehicles and parking privileges for persons with disabilities respectively and making conforming amendments to section 13-2 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws on second reading in that it take effect 15 days after final publication. I would-
Well, actually, all you need to be, all you need was the motion to reconsider and not say approve.
That's, that's correct because at this point, the veto's been overridden. So the, the ordinance actually is effect, well, it's, it's been adopted. If you want to consider amendments, now the proper motion would be to reconsider that ordinance. That'll return you to the point in time just before you adopted on second reading so you can get into the amendment business.
Okay. So I move to reconsider council bill number 08-2013.
Is there a second to reconsider?
Second.
We have a motion to reconsider. It was seconded by Ms. Davis and Ms. Jay. Please poll the council on the reconsideration.
Motion carries seven to one with Mr. Stites voting no. Is that not correct?
After reset, reset. Please re-vote.
I apologize. Motion carries eight zero.
Now you're at the point where you can make an amendment to the council bill with regards to the handicap parking number. Discussion, comments?
Actually, I think what you need is a motion now to, to, because you've moved to reconsider. So you, you've gone back just in time prior to approving on second reading. So someone, just, just like we're back at second reading now, someone needs to move the bill. That'll get a second and then someone needs to-
Okay.
To move to amend.
Now you want to make the motion to approve and then we'll get, we'll take amendments.
I move to approve council bill number 08-2013 and ordinance amending the penalties for violating sections 1203 and 1208 of the model traffic code for Colorado as adopted by the city. Am I right? The parking of major vehi, concerning the parking of major vehicles and parking privileges for persons with disabilities respectively and making conforming amendments to section 13-2 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws on second reading and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Now, for your purposes, in terms of amendments-
We need a second first.
I'm sorry.
We have a motion to approve. It was seconded by Mr. Reinhardt. Now we can take amendments.
And, and what you have now in front of you is a, is, is an ordinance that reduces the fine for, for the two handicap parking violations to $150. And so that's in section two of the ordinance. So a proper motion would be to amend the motion that was just made to increase those fines to some number. And if that amendment passes, then you have the bill in front of you again and you'll vote on second reading and see what happens.
Should they mention section two handicap parking?
Yes, it'd be section two handicap parking both places.
Okay. Is there an amendment for section two handicap parking? Ms. Jay?
I move to amend the motion to-
Say, section two handicap-
Section two handicap parking to a minimum of $225.
We have a motion to amend for 225 on the handicap parking. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pond for the amendment. So now we're at 225. Discussion on 225? I can talk fast if you want, Mr. Stites.
I'd like to make an amendment that we set the fee at 295.
So we're amending the amendment, which we can do one time. Is there a second for 295? Is there amendment for 295? Or a second for 295?
Definitely an option.
Calling for the last time? Fails for lack of a second. So we're, we're back at 225. And that was seconded by Mr. Pond. Discussion on 225? On the amendment?
I do have a question, a question. As I'm reading the papers, I, I find it rather confusing as to whether we have reduced the amount that, that was previously in our, in our laws. Or is it a continuing circumstance built up through tiering?
Well, you, you have reduced because the-
That's, that's what I get. The 200 is the maximum.
Yes. The code before this ordinance got started-
Right.
Was $350 in a tiered system for the first violation, going up to $1,000 for, I think, the third. So the, the minimum under the code before this ordinance got started was $350.
So you have decreased from three to, to 1,000 basically to-
At the moment, we're increasing from the 150.
That's right.
From the 150.
To 225.
All right. Which is probably the more logical thing that will happen. Okay.
So right now we have the amendment for 225. It's a flat rate. There's no tier system. Discussion on the amendment? Mr. Pond? Oh. I guess, please poll the council on the amendment.
No.
No.
Go ahead and reset, please.
Just finish voting. It's okay.
You ready again?
Go ahead.
Motion carries eight zero.
Okay. So we have a main motion as amended. So please poll the council on the main motion as amended. We're voting on the main motion now as amended for 225.
Yes.
Got to keep up, Janelle.
Oh, boy. Okay.
Yes.
Now you-
You're voting on the main motion as amended.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. So now the new fine for handicap parking will be 225 and no tier system.
No tier system.
Thank you. Move on to item number six. Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my, my privilege to introduce a, item number six. This is a motion to count, to cancel the study session of this August body for July 1st, 2013. At issue in this, at this time, there is no time-sensitive items listed for the July 1st, 2013 study session. So this is a request to cancel that meeting.
Is there a motion?
Is a motion in order?
The motion's in order.
Good. Then I move to counsel the study session of this Wheat Ridge City Council scheduled for July 1st, 2013.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have motion to cancel our next study session on July 1st, I believe. Seconded by Mr. Demont, Mr. Reinhardt. Please poll the council.
There's no discussion?
What did you want?
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda for this evening. We'll move on to city managers' matters.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, just one quick item. Councilmember Reinhardt and I met with Excel up at the CML conference last week. Had a good discussion. Talked about our franchise language disagreements and, and they said they are looking at their franchise and, and their franchise model and might be making changes in the future. They did give us an update on the, the banner issue and, and seems like it's, it's getting pretty close to conclusion. So we should be able to use some of the Excel polls for banners here sometime this summer. That's it.
Thanks. Mr. Dahl?
Not tonight. Thanks.
City Clerk's office?
Nothing tonight.
I just had two quick things, then I will move on. First of all, I wanted to apologize to Councilmember Langworthy. I got a little upset last meeting and I, I know I can be snarky at times and that's sort of my, my MO sometimes when I'm caught off guard or fighting for a, a situation or fighting for a group of people. So I apologize to Ms. Langworthy for jumping down her throat when she mentioned why she was voting the way she did and mentioning the veto. So, hope we can still be friends. And then the last thing I wanted to do, read real quick, is a letter to, not a letter, but this will be going out to the citizens via a phone bank tomorrow. For Americans, the Fourth of July usually signifies summer fun, vacations, and the gathering of family and friends. Independence Day can also bring tragedy in the form of serious injuries and fires from unlawful use of fireworks. As the Fourth of July holiday approaches, the Wheat Ridge Police Department and the Office of the Mayor would like to remind citizens that all fireworks, including sparklers and fountains, are illegal with city limits, within city limits. Heading into the Fourth of July holiday, emergency service providers' resources are significantly impacted by the increased number of complaint calls for the illegal use of fireworks. The Wheat Ridge Police Department will be strictly enforcing local and state ordinances prohibiting fireworks. The police department will have extra staff patrolling our neighborhoods, parks, and the greenbelt. And local fire stations are accepting surrendered fireworks from community members. Help keeps Wheat Ridge safe during the upcoming holiday by minimizing the risk of property damage and personal injury caused by fireworks. I encourage all Wheat Ridge citizens to have a safe Fourth of July and peaceful by enjoying one of the many planned Fourth of July celebrations held throughout the Denver metro area. So that'll be going out tomorrow via a robo-call to about 7,000 houses in Wheat Ridge. That was paid for by the police department and the, my office. Mr. Starker?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. But as we're not going to meet again until after the Fourth of July, I'd like to wish everyone a very safe and happy Fourth of July.
Thank you. Mr. Pond?
Thank you. Couple things. I'm sorry that I, I was not able to respond to Representative Schaefer while she was up on public comment, but I would like to say to the residents of Paramount Heights that the city is aware of the issues with the consolidated water project in that neighborhood as well as the need for coming in. And I do believe that the city has a plan for addressing the streets in the area. So I apologize for not being more clear on that with her earlier or prior to this, but I do think we have a good plan for that. Happy Fourth of July. And just to let Mike know, I'm, I've planted new grass in my, in my front yard, which is great. There are a couple weeds in there, but I'm going to be working on that really diligently. So I just want you to know.
Ms. Davis?
Nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Demont?
Nothing tonight. Thanks.
Mr. Reinhardt?
Nothing. Thank you.
Ms. Jay?
Only one thing. There are, there are many seniors in our neighborhood who are receiving phone calls from, what I've understand is, is supposedly an association or whatever attached to the fire department, or that's the, the message they receive. And they're being asked to contribute via their credit card to this association to help firemen. And I just wanted to say that if you get a call like that, ask them to send you literature. Don't just give them a credit card. That's a really, really dangerous thing to do. Ask for that literature so that you can check it out with the State of Colorado or whatever you need to do. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind people that our first performance in the park is coming up. I just want to remind people that our first performance in the park is coming up July the third from six thirty to eight P.M. at Anderson Park. And I do want to make a comment. I still believe that our tickets for speeding and violations should be higher than our parking, but there's, to me, a bigger problem here than just us talking about parking tickets. To me, the new fee structure, it only addresses a small part of the problem that our citizens might face in Wheat Ridge. And what I see is that there's a larger fundamental problem with meeting the needs of our citizens with mental or physical disabilities. And I think that what we should do is try to bring together the parties that are involved and try to address it as a whole. While it isn't, I mean, the federal and the state do part of the work, but we really have to deal with our citizens on a one-to-one basis. Wheat Ridge has done an aging well. Task Force, which is trying to come up with kind of the whole of the list problems that seniors may face while living and aging in Wheat Ridge, and small ways to address those problems and then bigger ways to address it as money comes available. And to me, this is just another area that maybe that's what we need to do. Maybe we need to bring in different groups and talk to them and find out. And even our first speaker mentioned a task force. And to me, we're just fixing a little drop in a bucket and we really should look at the whole problem. So I would, I'll be asking maybe if we can bring it to a study session, a discussion on how to create such a task force and really get people involved and find better solutions than just kind of doing this one at a time.
So go ahead and make a consensus then.
I'd like to make a consensus that at some future study session, we discuss a task for, force on those people in our community that have a mental or a physical disability and how we can better help them.
Does anybody have a problem with that moving forward to a study session? Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Stites?
Yeah. First off, George, I will be at your house with my tape measure and measure your two weeds and see how they're doing. It's almost July, which means then it's almost August, and the third weekend in August is the Carnation Festival and then the parade, so I'd like to put, one, the city on notice and, two, the businesses on Thirty-Eighth to start cleaning up your parking lots and neatening them up. Let's put our best foot forward. Would be a great time to relocate to Wheat Ridge. If you need any help, check with one of us or staff. They'd be happy to do it. Positive thing this time, you know, I have heard some really bad stories lately. Check with your neighbors in your neighborhoods, would you, and see if anybody needs food, clothing. I've just heard some stuff lately that there are some people in this city going without food and don't have enough clothing, so please check. And as always, please try to find it and buy it. Wheat Ridge, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to commend council tonight on their actions on the veto and on the parking. It's such a good first step for handicap parking. I thought it worked, a good discussion. George, I appreciate your comments and thoughtfulness on it, even though you weren't here on the tenth. So with that, everybody have a safe and peaceful Fourth of July. We're adjourned.